Call this meeting of Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge? And stand as Pastor Kathy Swift commands. This church leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is right. Righteous God, for sunshine today, for temperatures above 32, we give thanks. For our elected officials, for the decisions that they made, for the commitment that they have to our community, we also give thanks. We lift up to you all those from our community who have died from COVID, asking that you would give their families your peace, for it is in Jesus's name that we pray.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hall. Mr. Tucker. Here. Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
We have to call him.
Thank you. Public participation. In-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the counts from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. We have Matt Springer. Put to the table, please.
Yes, sir. Great to speak.
Yes.
Hey, first and foremost, I wanted to call you guys for the service you provide for our community. I'm pretty sorry if you're not getting ready to be in the city council. Like, you've not doing it for an actual game. Thank you so much. I came here tonight, I had called the zoning official, I forget her name, very sweet lady. Who would I call to talk about zoning?
Callie. Callie McFarlane.
Yes, very nice. And I thought, why would I just come here and talk to you guys? I'm chiropractor, right? COVID hit us so hard. I told myself I wouldn't get emotional. Who would want to go to chiropractors during the COVID thing when you got the hands on everybody? You know what I mean? I don't know. But I, I didn't want to go in. I'm sorry. I'm getting myself. So. I have 30, 40, 50 people being calling. I live in my house and do treatments on. I never tried to. My wife said, you know what? You can pay your mortgage doing that. But I live on Center Street. I was wondering, I did zoning, that's residential, right? Where's up here? I wasn't sure if I would get some sort of, in this environment of COVID, some sort of reprieve or, you know, exemption or something like that to be able to actually charge people in my house on Central Bay East Center Street. And put just a small little sign, you know, in my yard. It would, we're a great Monticello family. Too popular in that state. And my oldest son's a part of the United States Marine Corps. Five, seven, eighteen. My second one is the Methodist school of terrorism. All of them, you know, blah, blah, blah. I have five of them. I think if I can't find a way to do something to come down this COVID, I'm going to provide it for them. You know, people want to come to me and tell me I can't afford buy some commercial real estate in this day and age. I'm wondering if there'd be some sort of exemption, even if it's just for like a year. I went down the street for three blocks to all my neighbors and they said, hell, yeah. I own cars an hour. They would come in front of their house. All my neighbors agreed. They love it. They're like, at least you're doing something. We're offering. I know as a candidate, you probably don't have it. Or just give me a vision, but I'm just trying to plead my case to see. Definitely, even if you just gotta turn your, turn your head.
Okay. Fortunately, or unfortunately, whereas the case may be, we do have procedures that we must, we must go through before any, any of those kinds of decisions can be made.
Is there exceptions during the week or during time?
No, there has not been. So that's just, that's just, you know, straight up. I wish we could do more, but it's, you can't do for one and not do for others. And we've not had anyone else make that request. So you need to contact Callie and work through the process the way the process.
Yeah, she told me no. Apparently it don't work. Thanks, guys. Great minds will fail.
Public particip-, or excuse me, remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by a web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone on the site? Callie, are you there?
She's checking for me.
She's checking for you.
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schiffer, go ahead.
I would just like to ask that the mayor or somebody, please summarize what that gentleman just said. It was impossible to understand what he was saying. He's speaking at the table, but his audio was going through Mara's microphone on her laptop, I think. And that's why it can't be understood. It was very garbled. So if somebody would just briefly summarize what it was that he said for compliance with the open meetings act, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
He was, he was, he came to the council asking, asking for us to give him a variance in normal standard procedure in changing zoning so that he could run a business out of his house. I just explained to him that we have procedures that must be followed. And that was about the sum of it. Am I correct? I'm asking the people in the room.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, just for future reference, if it's at all possible to get a microphone in the close vicinity of the people that are speaking, because we, we had, had trouble with that. The county board had trouble with it the other day, too. And I think it's, it's all a matter of the close proximity of the microphone to the person speaking.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Uh huh. Anyone else? No, thank you. Moving on, consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims reports, claims dated February 9th, 2021 through February 22nd, 2021. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, February 8th, 2021. Budget report, January 2021. Treasurer's report, January 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Mrs. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Carr.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. There are over 60 businesses in Monticello Ziland. I have stated and been met that are actively hunting over 12, 120 full and part-time positions of all levels, trades, and experience. View the local job board on the city's website for a listing or visit the Piatt County Workforce Development Office for workforce assistance. Full moon stretch and SIP yoga, Saturday, February 27th, 6:30 PM at Allerton Park and Retreat Center. Registration is now open for the Spring 2021 Monticello Boot Camp Program. Space is limited and COVID restrictions must be followed. More information and registration can be found at monticellobootcamp.com. Remember that your community businesses still need your support. Moving on to new business, mayoral appointment. I find it necessary to designate a special committee, the 30-acre multi-use outdoor recreation committee, to study the factual economic impact of design elements and needs assessment and funding opportunities associated with the development of Lot 402 of Apple Tree Fourth subdivision, containing 30.964 acres, which the city of Monticello purchased in 2009 into a multi-use outdoor recreational facility and to make a report and recommendation to the city council for possible future action. As provided in the city code, code 30 dot, dot 10, 3029, and Roberts Rules of Order, pages 495 and 96, I hereby announce the names of 30-acre multi-use recreation committee members to the city council. Mike Kuhn, chairman. John Frick. Amy Schwarko. Tiffany Kester. Nicole Soper. Chris Patton. Heather Ball. And Aaron Tace. The term of the 30-acre multi-use outdoor recreation committee and its members is limited to October 15th, 2021, and I look forward to the committee's report and recommendation before this, before that date. I would like to thank all, to thank all the members of the 30-acre multi-use outdoor recreation committee for taking the time to study this important issue for the city. So that's that. Is there a motion to approve my appointment?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
No.
Mr. Kane.
I'm standing.
Mr. Ferricks.
Standing.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed is in good class. Thank you very much. Moving on, we're going to, I'm calling a public hearing to order. Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program. Is Callie there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If you remember from the other times we did this program with public hearing, you'll have to listen to me speak for a little bit. And then we will request public comment if there are any. The state of Illinois has relocated community development block grant funds in the amount of $20 million to be used for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, providing financial assistance to businesses impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Counties and municipalities which are designated as non-entitlement may apply on behalf of an eligible business for funding in the form of a grant. The grants may not exceed $25,000 per business and must be used for working capital expenses based upon 60 days of estimated cost once the business has opened up or resumes full operation. As the sixth Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program grant we are completing, city staff wishes to present an application for the Brown Bag Incorporated requesting $25,000. This amount will cover working capital expenses such as insurance, utilities, inventory, and payroll. The business must reopen or return to normal operation within one year of the grant award. The business must also provide documentation and proof of payment for eligible expenses for reimbursement, as well as the closeout reporting of the grant. The city of Monticello prides itself on supporting local businesses where possible. One of the consistent goals is to promote and encourage fair housing and business practices within the community in both present and future development. The health and continuation of our local businesses is a direct reflection on our local economy. The amount requested is based on a 60-day estimate of expenses. The applicant had to provide as, provide their January of 2020 expenses for the application, which is doubled to determine this amount. As a brief overview of this request, we're all familiar with the Brown Bag Incorporated at 20, excuse me, 212 West Washington in downtown. It's an independently owned restaurant that has been in business since opening in 1973, normally employing 13 full and part-time individuals. The business is considered essential, but the majority of traffic is dine-in with no drive-through service available. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, they have had their business severely negatively impacted in the amount of service they can provide, and the owner has been offering delivery and carryout services. The total January 2020 expenses were $36,506.16. Again, they're asking for the maximum grant award of $25,000. The business has provided all the necessary documents for the grant application. Notice of this public hearing was published in the February 10th edition of the local paper, and the application has been available for public review, actually, early since January 29th of 2021. No public comment has been brought to staff's attention as of this point. So I'll be asking for public input, if that's all right, Mayor? Again, due to the kind of hybrid setup we have here, if you wish to speak, and please identify yourself and which area you're representing. If you're a resident, a business owner, and so forth, we do have to document that for the application.
Are there any, any public comments that need to be made? Anyone have a public comment? I'll ask one more time. Anyone making a public comment? Hearing none, I would like a motion to adjourn or to close the hearing.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Let's have a vote, please.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Resolution 21, the 2021-10 Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, the Brown Bag Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, ordinance 2021-11. An ordinance, an ordinance amending the appropriation for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2021, ending on December 31st, 2021 for the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Terry, you want to talk, speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, if you recall, fiscal year 2020 ended, fortunately, in our favor with a surplus in the revenues due to some local Cures Act funding, as well as reduction in the general fund expenditures of nearly 15%. So with that being said, ordinance number 2021-11, we are asking, requesting that the appropriation ordinance be amended in order to purchase some equipment. And I've spelled out here, includes the purchase of a used truck and accessories for the administration department for $35,200. Adds an additional contribution to the police pitching fund in the amount of $220,000. Adds replacing a snow pushbox that goes on our front-end loader for $6,000. And a truck purchase for the concrete crew in the amount of $60,000 that was forecasted to be budgeted for FY 2022. We have a one-ton dump truck that is out of commission right now. So pushing or moving up that expenditure for the concrete crew, their existing truck will go into another operation in the public works fleet, and we'll just sell the decommissioned one-ton truck outright. The administration department, the current F-150 is having some issues that we feel pertinent to go ahead and trade that in towards a new, or I'm sorry, a used. I think it's a 2020 F-150, similar size. That vehicle is what we use to travel two or three individuals to conferences. Council usually uses it in a parade. And then the push, pushbox, we realized that the front-end loader's pushbox was broken when we tried to use it in the latest snow event. So it is recommended that city council discuss and approve. This is an ordinance, 2021-11. I know it's going to take about six to eight weeks to get a bed for one of those trucks that we're ordering. So we'd like to get that, or as soon as we can. So recommend that you approve 2021-11, amending the appropriation ordinance tonight if you can.
Thank you, Terry. Are there comments or questions? Is there a motion to waive second reading?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2021-11. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, I need a vote, please.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Did you call the same order two times in a row?
I did.
She's keeping younger, tell us, John. Moving on, thank you so much. Moving on, ordinance 2021-12. An ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly touched on this for the last ordinance, but this is going to allow us to trade in a current 2010 Ford F-150 to the Rick Ridings Auto Group and purchase a similar used 2020 Ford F-150 from Rick Ridings Auto Group with purchasing some necessary accessories for the truck. As I indicated, this was discussed for future budgets for FY 2022. However, the condition of the existing Ford F-150, we would like to push that up to the current year. This vehicle is used daily by the capital improvement project manager, as well as other department personnel and city council. So I included a picture of what the truck kind of looks like. It's just got the four doors that makes it easy to get in and out of, transport folks as need be. It is recommended, they'd like to, we'd like to get this traded in to Rick Ridings and purchased yet here in February, if possible. So staff does recommend city council review, discuss, and approve ordinance 2021-12 as presented. So I have it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to waive second reading?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2021-12. An ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments before we vote? Can I have a vote, please, Ma?
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Barris.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Miss Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that my name?
Yes. Ma'am.
She got it. Thank you very much. Moving on to older persons reports. I'll start with Mary tonight.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I figured I'd be on a roll because I think, woo, with you and you didn't have anything, so I figured we could move it along. Wendell?
I'm good, I'm good.
Michael?
Well, and I was, I was going to mention this last time, but you know, we're sat at the passing Pete Bergstrom and learned since the last meeting that they tend to close permanently and similar thoughts are with Linda and the family and hopes that, you know, it's a, it leaves a big hole. Just personally, all the things he did for the city and certainly the business itself closing leaves a hole. And so just acknowledge that and, you know, look forward to seeing how we can refurbish that space, I guess. And I did have one other question for Terry. Do we, at what point are they going to decide on what to do with the pool this summer?
We are moving forward like it's going to be open.
I had a couple people ask me about that, so.
Yep, they're registering for some of the recreational programs last couple weeks. And then we'll be registering for the Monticello Family Aquatic Center here in the near future.
Yeah, so we have like an early bird. You can purchase passes or are they going to wait on that?
They'll probably offer at least one early bird date.
Okay.
I just ordered my waterproof, water ducky inner tube mask. I mean, we'll all be sick.
My first day to open. Sure Steve's there for that.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thomas? Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Panel.
I'm good, I have anything, thanks.
John?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up to me, Mike. I was a witness, not mentioning that myself. Moving on to the police chief's report, John.
Just one thing, we are in the process of accepting applications for hire. The closed date on that will be March 5th at 5:00 PM. So that's Friday night. Our testing dates will be on the 15th. So we'll have a rapid test and then interviews by the police department, which will be on the 20th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the key?
How long did this person that left to work here?
It depends, we've had two.
Oh, okay.
One worked here for about three years. The other one had not finished his field training.
Okay.
Did he, did he make it through? Do we send him to the academy? Do we send him?
Yeah, we sent him through the academy and he made it. He was here for a couple months when he was deployed. Came back and then he.
Any other questions? Thanks, John.[1725.42] City administrator's report, Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank council for approving the amended appropriation ordinance this evening, as well as the purchase, trade-in and purchase of the Ford F one fifty. It's greatly appreciated. I'd also like to thank Callie Jo McFarlane on her efforts on those grants. That's going to be a daunting task, and it's, it's quite time-consuming, but she's, she, as usual, done a heck of a job. Real quick, just a couple of things. Planning and zoning board meeting scheduled for last week was canceled due to the weather. So that is rescheduled for March fifteenth, and then it will be brought to your attention March twenty-second. And again, that's rezoning a preliminary plan of the plus or minus nine acres on North State Street, commonly referred to as the old Varner property. And then the annexation will be handled by just this council, March twenty-second as well. The fire department chief repki has identified some equipment that they, that is extra or surplus that they would like to get rid of. Some of it's entailed, entailing a, some trade-in for some other equipment. So I think he's going to try to have that to you guys on your March eighth city council meeting. Staff and I met with the Recreation Foundation last week. It was a great meeting. They're excited about the rec committee and, and what they can do to assist not only that committee, but all recreation and parks programs. They had a change in, in chairperson, and so they're excited and, and we're excited. Speaking of the rec committee, I'd like to thank and commend Mindy Condis, the Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. She's assisted with getting some information ready. We've got an informational packet. Alder McCoon to, to give to you and, and John and, and the other members of that committee. A lot of historical information. It was, part of it was presented to the council in two thousand fifteen as an update then. So it's got some meeting minutes and some agendas, you know, to get that committee up to speed as, as quick as possible. So we're looking forward to that. I'll have those packets, hopefully bound and ready to distribute maybe tomorrow, if I can, so we're excited about the rec committee and, and how that endeavor goes. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion to John?
Somewhat.
Does anyone want a second minute?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?